Anyone need to break, why don't we take a...
Mr. Crowe, you have the floor?
Thank you, through the council, through the chair. Tonight, we, the next item is a study session for Lawrence Technology University. This item was before council at a public hearing on August 22nd.
Excuse me, we're trying to run a meeting here.
This item was before the council had their August 22nd public hearing, which was postponed due to the length of discussion until your September 26th meeting. Tonight, I have invited representatives of Lawrence Tech University to do an overview, and they brought their professionals to provide a brief presentation on the proposed site plan to construct a new 51,000 square foot, two-story student dormitory to house 151 students. We also, for your consideration, will be bringing back forth the rezoning request in a master plan amendment. But I think most of the questions that arose during the public hearing dealt with the site plan issues, and we wanted to have an opportunity to present the specifics of the proposal and answer any questions that the council may have prior to your next public hearing. With that, I'm happy to introduce Mr. Joe Verizer, representing Lawrence Tech. He will introduce his staff and professional consultants, and I will be available after the presentation to answer any questions that the council may have. Thank you.
Could you give your name and address for the record, please?
I'm Joe Verizer. I'm the university architect of Lawrence Tech located at 21,000 West Ten Mile here in Southfield. Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to present our project here tonight. We didn't get too much of that detail of the project, we want to do that. I'd like to take a moment to just mention something. Dr. Walker, our president, wanted to be here this evening and couldn't. But he will be at the meeting on September 26th. If anyone wants to ask questions of him or anything, he will be there to answer them. So in the meantime, you have me. I report direct to him, 100 percent. So he said to make sure you realize that when I speak or anything you ask of me, I commit anything in the course of the evening, that I'm speaking for him. So rest assured of that. With that, I just want to make mention of a couple of things about the university. We spent some time recently talking about the history with some people, as many as could show up, about the history going back to 1955, and how we've grown and had a town-and-gown relationship with the city for some time. And it's been a remarkable, remarkable relationship, and it has grown. It's strong in the past, it's extremely strong in the present, and we look forward to it being strong in the future. We're a university of about 4,000 students. Not all of those are on the campus, but a good, most of them are. A little under 1,000 are located off-campus, various overseas, in other cities in the state. And we expect to grow to 4,000 on the campus, which will get us to a total of about 4,500 to 5,000 ultimately, which is about the max that we foresee our campus site handling. Now, some interesting facts came up recently in the meeting that we had. It was open for everyone. And Bruce Annett brought for us some things that go back to the early 80s, and a couple of statistics that were informational and very valuable. What was it, 11 million?
11 million that was spent here within the city.
11 million by students and faculty and staff in the early 80s, per annum, 11 million dollars worth of cash flow. You bring that in present value up to current dollars, and that looks like about 33 mil in today's dollars that are spent here. Another thing has happened recently. We have a consultant that looked at us. We look at ourselves, but we look at the outside world and say, "Take a look at us." And there was a consultant we hired to say, "How are we doing? Where are we going? Are we on the right path?" And that consultant came back and said, "You're on the right path, but you need to accentuate a few things later." They reminded us that in the 60-mile radius that we predominantly draw from, it's not good enough anymore. The population, whether we like it or not, our population that we draw from, and the age group that we draw from for our students, is declining. And unless we find a way of expanding where we're marketing, we're going to lose our portion of market share, and we have to expand. We have to go not only outstate, we have to go out of state. We have to go out of the country, and we're doing that. We have a large component of foreign students that come here. We want them to come here, we want them to like it here, we want them to stay here. And I think that's beneficial for both us and for the city of Southfield. So that's just a couple of the statistics. I know some issues came up, as you may recall, at the last public hearing, council. And I've got people with me tonight from the university that are prepared to answer any of the questions you may have that came up in that regard. But now what I want to do is turn it over to our consultants, because the one thing we didn't have time to spend much time on, if any, was about the project itself and the site plan and what the facility looks like. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Sue Newman from JPRA, who's going to lead the story, and she'll introduce any other folks as she needs some support. Thank you.
Can you give your name and address for the record, please?
I sure will. Sue Newman with JPRA Architects, 39300 West 12 Mile, Farmington Hills, Michigan. I'll start by giving you a general overview of the siting of the building, and then I'll hand it over to my colleagues to talk about site enhancements and the building design. To first orient you with the campus, the campus is bounded by Ten Mile to the south, the large freeway to the east, and Civic Center Drive to the north. There are currently two residential buildings on the campus, one that happens to sit just south of Ten Mile, and the other, which is referred to as the north student housing building that sits on the campus adjacent to what I'll refer to as central campus. Central campus consists of the majority of the academic buildings on the campus. When we started this project, we took a look at the whole campus and the university's master plan, and determined that we wanted to keep the housing adjacent, as adjacent to the existing housing that is on campus and as adjacent to central campus as possible to give connectivity for the students, both to their fellow students that were living right in the north building and to central campus. So in doing that, we positioned the new building, the proposed building, right adjacent to the north building, purposely faced it inward to campus so the students can literally walk down these pedestrian paths that will be provided to their classrooms. In addition to the pedestrian connectivity between the two housing buildings and the academic buildings, we are providing a pedestrian link up to the service drive and tying it to a new extension of the bike path that is a community-wide initiative that will run from the Gateway Project that is at the corner of Civic Center Drive and the service drive, and it'll run to this point with this project, come in and tie to the rest of the pedestrian circulation on campus. In the future, that bike path will be extended through, down along the service drive to Ten Mile. To refine the siting of the building... We had a required setback from Circle Drive of 68 feet. We exceed that by eight, to 85 feet. So the building is set back an additional 20 feet from Civic Center Drive... Or I see, sorry, excuse me, Circle Drive. We have a side yard setback from the property line adjacent to our property of 93 feet. We more than doubled that. We're at 210 feet from that side property line. Our rear setback was a required setback of 75. We went to about 83 feet in the rear. With that, I'll hand it over to Mark Russell, our landscape architect, to talk to you about site enhancement.
Mark Russell with Russell Design, 114 Racine Street, Northville, Michigan. We're the landscape architects on the project. Let me just put this down for a second. Just to give you a little bit of an overview of the existing site. To accommodate the new building, what Sue mentioned was here, we had to remove some existing trees. We ended up removing approximately 179 trees... Excuse me, we are required to replace 179 trees. We have, we've removed 125 eight-inch caliper trees, which are the regulated trees in your city, and 35 of those trees are classified as dead, so we don't really need to replace those. So going through the formulas, we have to replace 179 trees. And we've accommodated most of those on the site that Sue just showed you. And then the balance of those will be located... The balance of those will be located on campus if we cannot accommodate all of the trees within the property limits of this particular project. So just to give you a little bit of overview of the landscape enhancements, what we're trying to do is use a lot of native plantings, and we're trying to use a lot of what we call metal lawn, which is non-irrigated lawn areas that will act as a transition and will also enhance and improve some of the wildlife habitat that's going to be disturbed while we're constructing the building. And to bring that back more readily, we'll be providing the understory vegetation to accommodate that. Also, we're using some soft engineering approaches, working with PEA, who are the civil engineers. What we're doing on-site is creating rain gardens and bio swales, which will act as a retention, onsite retention and cleansing opportunity of the runoff from the building. Predominantly, most of the site flows within the internal system, within the parking lot. But what we'll do with the building runoff from the structure, which will go, Mark will talk to you in a little bit about that, is we're going to collect it in swales, if you will, vegetated swales, that will discharge into a rain garden that will essentially act as a for-bay. And then there'll be an overflow system built within this, within each of these rain gardens, and then that will ultimately collect into a retention pond, or detention pond that we have located here at the southern part of the site. We're required by Wayne County, or excuse me, required by the city to provide a two-foot wetted basin at the bottom of that, that's depicted here with the water here. If you're familiar with the site, there's a good stand of trees along here and some pretty significant landscape, trees that provide some nice landscape features. So we wanted to try to retain those. In doing so, what we did is we wanted to push the detention pond to the south as much as we could to perhaps even utilize that for future construction, but more importantly, just try to save some of these existing trees which are adjacent to the home that's located on Circle Drive here. In doing so, we have to create a small, well, it's not small, it's about seven feet high, quite lit, about over 100 feet long, but a retaining wall that will protect these existing trees and then also provide the storage capacity that we need within the detention facility. The, as Sue mentioned, the pedestrian circulation system will come in from the service drive area and fall into the centerport part of the campus here. And what we wanted to try to do with this building, and the reason we located this building here, was to provide an opportunity of amenity here for the kids in between the two buildings. If you're familiar with the north residential hall here, there's not a heck of a lot of space outside. Even, I mean, if you want to go into the brambles and the bushes, there's a heck of a lot of space back there, but not much usable space back there. There's an existing volleyball court that's back there and essentially back in this area. So we wanted to provide as much amenity and open space as we could for the kids to go out and enjoy the transition and enjoy the environment adjacent to their living facility. And also, to accommodate some outdoor living experience, we've created a little entry plaza here on the south side of the building, which is, we don't know exactly the material. It's going to be like an exposed aggregate, concrete material. We'll have benches and some tables and some bike racks out there to accommodate the needs of the kids coming in back and forth from their classes. And then in the future, the bike, or the path system will continue on into the campus over to this side and further connect over to, down into the main part of campus and engineering buildings. That's it, and I'll just wait for your questions. Mark is now going to talk about the architecture and some of the interior components.
Good evening. My name is Mark Eggers. I'm with JPRA Architects, 39300 West 12 Mile, Farmington Hills. I'm here to talk about the exterior building design. Somewhat of a challenge with the campus of LPU. A lot of architecture on the campus, a lot of styles. One of the goals we were trying to reach was establishing an academic residence hall feel. So a lot of residential qualities, scale, forms. And then the other request or challenge was durability, maintenance of the materials, longevity, following LEED standards for the building. So the primary building structure is a SIP panel system, which is a sandwiched insulation board, very energy efficient. And then the exterior is clad with brick, and then burnished block, and some accents on the corners of a material called Trespa. It's a phenolic resin simulated wood material. And I brought the actual materials, if you want to touch and feel it. This is the wood product. This is used extensively in Europe. We've used it on some projects here in Michigan as well. So the roof is a standing seam metal roof. Again, we want this to be here for a long time and set a standard for the future. The main entry, again, has a very collegiate feel to it, scale, welcoming to the students and guests. We're going to have outdoor seating for the kids, bike racks. Lots of daylight into the rooms, into the public spaces. That's it. Do you have the elevations, Sue?
We do.
Again, brick, metal roof, metal siding, a larger scale burnished block at the entry. That's really, again, the exterior of the building was really meant to give the campus a nice academic feel, so. Is it on the back? Yeah. Something that the university and the consultant that we're working with, this is a relatively new concept in dorm living. It's called a pod. Instead of your typical single corridor with rooms and a shared restroom, this has five pods, they're called. This is a two-story building, so there's a central two-story living room with a shared kitchen. In the dorms, the rooms, all the doors open up to that central space. So it forces more interaction than you typically would have in a standard dorm. So it's a, it's a nice, for freshmen, it's a very nice space, very nice building, but in the end, it's going to promote more creativity, more interaction.
Nice thing about working with consultants is you get to have some comments when you think there's something important that they may have missed. Let me find the board I want to talk about. Couple of points that I think are important. As you're in our huge parking lot over here, it's called C-Lot, affectionately. And we're changing this along here to have a drop-off area. This is the focus of the entry to the building. This is the front of the building. This is the main entrance. You're coming in here, you're dropping off students here. All of the in and out of this building is 99 percent this way and aimed toward either of their parking here. Not all of these people, all these students have cars. If they're from out of state, particularly out of the country, they're trapped here. And that's okay, that's good for us, that's good for you. They're going to buy here, they're going to eat here, and that's good for all of us. So they don't have a lot of cars, but what few they have will be out here. This is where they park, this is where they walk, this is the drop-off. And I think that's important. The other thing is, if you say the setback here is 80-some feet, Sue?
Required it, I think it's 85 point something.
85 point something, so, sorry, 86, I like her other name. One of the things, if you look at the rendering... Where's the rendering? Is it still up there?
I think it's behind.
Too many boards, yeah. That point is... On the end, when I'm... You're going to make a liar out of me, Sue? Because it's a point like this.
That's the back.
Yep.
That's the back, yeah, and the one on top is the front.
Yeah, so it's about this point here, that this point is about the part that you're saying is 86 feet from the property line. And that still is a couple of hundred feet, several hundred feet, between there and the first house up around the curb on Circle Drive.
Yeah, it's just, I'm sorry.
So that point here is still several hundred feet away from here. Couple hundred feet.
And that's where?
That's the first house. There's two houses here.
I was going to say, the actual rendering, I just clarify a little. This rendering view is this side of the building, because you're looking at the building from this direction, so that's the 210 feet. And then that side of the building, if you were to see that side of the building, is the 85. No, that's okay.
Point of clarification. With that, I'd like to, I guess, ask you if you have any questions or comments. Could you go ahead?
Coming back to the community kitchen. Am I right, because it's a community kitchen?
It's a, I would call it kitchenette. It's a community kitchenette that they have access to in the common area.
All of them, big space?
No, it's in each...
Each pod, Joe.
Each pod has that. Each pod has that right here, 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 and here.
How many seats can use that at one time?
At one time?
Oh.
Thirty.
Thirty?
Thirty. There's 30 students per pod. And it, I'm sorry, it's a kitchenette, there's, it's really...
For popping popcorn and pop.
It's not a full-service kitchen, no. They have a cafeteria on campus.
They have a microwave, right?
Microwaves, cabinets.
Eat your own noodles.
Yes. There is presently a cafeteria on. That's right across on the site, it's the management building.
In the Buell Building?
In the Buell Building. Which is, it's over here.
I'm, I'm... I thought it was a community kitchen where they can cook and make their food and everything.
It's more of a snack kitchen. It's for light, something, very few students are going to use that. We looked at other universities that have comparable. We went to one that's down south at Jackson, and they have more than, I don't know what the number is, well over 150 students in there.
Another question. You did make changes from the last time you came to the council.
We've made one change that was actually introduced at the commission meeting that we're prepared to show you here in the, that's not reflected on these drawings that are on these boards. Mark?
How about the, how about the people who came the last time? Are they here tonight?
Yeah, oh, there's one, okay.
Did you get any input from them?
Not since that meeting, no.
Are you going to invite them?
We're going to be talking with some of them there, yes.
I think they had problems with the space on the dormitory for that one. Was that eliminated?
No, there wasn't, the concern they expressed was one of the traffic of people, primarily students walking. One of the residents in that area, the Orlos, Mrs. Orlo was present, Elaine Orlo, and she commented on an uncomfortable feeling of groups of students walking past her house, traversing over to the campus. Now, we had introduced an item at the planning commission meeting. We had a drawing along to show what we have that is not reflected here, but it adds landscaping along the path. We show 100-foot, typical 100-foot increment, which might be 150, so we'd get 50 percent more in that. But it shows in the 100 feet how many more trees we're adding, and I say bushes or shrubs, whatever the right terminology is, that will fill in in between. So we have, I don't know, what is it, half, four or five deciduous canopy-type trees?
Yeah, a combination of deciduous and evergreen trees, along with some under-story trees. And then what we would do is work with staff and receive comments from the residents about their concerns and locate plant material, shrub material, that would act as a buffer and screen of that and a deterrent for traffic going back and forth. But more importantly, it talks about opacity. We're trying to achieve an 80 to a 90 percent opacity in the winter as well. So we're going to be using a combination of evergreen and deciduous shrub material of varying heights that would not only provide seasonal interest, but also act as a deterrent.
From the last meeting we had and the change, remember the first time? Many of the residents come and speak. Did you meet with them since that time?
No, I tried to reach Mrs. Orlo, who gave me her phone number before she left. I tried on two occasions and failed to reach her. I intend to reach her, for sure.
Well, that's only one person.
Yeah, that's the only one that gave me contact information that I have, but I will try to reach others, yes.
But you didn't meet with them yet?
Not yet, no.
But do you intend to?
Yes, we will.
I am surprised they're not here tonight.
They didn't know you.
They were not notified, were they, tonight?
Not for tonight.
To the chair. To the chair, they have been invited to the public hearing on the twenty-sixth. And that's the official meeting, because this was for a study presentation for the council. And we wanted to schedule this two weeks prior to the public hearing so that Lawrence Tech had feedback from the council so they could address those issues prior to your next public hearing and give them an opportunity to meet with the residents as a follow-up.
Okay, well, they're going to meet with you on that.
They have been notified.
Mr. Saber?
I wanted to ask you about traffic on Circle Drive. Would there be anybody parking near the dormitory? I know you said parking, realistically, you want the students to park in block C. But will there be students parking on Circle Drive because they think it's more convenient?
You know, that's possible. That is very possible. But we can't control that because we can't impose the restriction on the parking on Circle Drive itself. We don't, we're not, we wouldn't object at all. I mean, if the city wanted to post that as no parking, that's fine by us. That would not bother us at all, but there's not much we can do about the posting of that.
To the chair. The planning commission made a recommendation that the city consider no parking, no standing, posting, but that has to come from the council. That can be one of the conditions of approval.
Well, that's why I'm worried.
We also have to be careful that you're not being detrimental to the people who are living. That might have some out-of-town guests or some party or something.
That's correct, but given the property that Lawrence Tech owns and the distance, I think we could do it in a way that's respectful.
They're willing to take that consideration.
Do they park there now? Do they park in the circle now?
Yes, they do sometimes.
They do park in the circle now?
At the last meeting, I did hear that when there's activity going on at the houses, that there's parking.
Well, so won't they object if you post the no parking in the circle?
To our, to our students?
No, not the students. Residents who live there.
Well, let's look at that. The blue indicates all of the property that Lawrence Tech owns. That's all of us. The only two that we don't own up in here are these two parcels.
So that essentially is private property.
These are private property. One is the Orlos and the other is the Jacksons.
Correct.
That's you, right?
No, not the Jacksons.
You're not the Jacksons. Okay, I get it.
Like yours, you butt up against my property.
Okay.
At any rate, I think the university ought to consider not renting to students on Circle Drive then. My understanding is, only right now, nine houses on Circle Drive are private residences, and there are a few other houses that you're renting.
There are eleven houses that we do not own. Four are on this side of Circle Drive and seven are on this side.
Okay. I went to the city's assessor's website. I counted twenty-seven parcels, and I have a list here of all the properties, according to our assessor, that Lawrence Tech owns. And it's sixteen out of twenty-seven. But if you've got, this is a neighborhood in transition, clearly. And if you've got, we need to respect the neighbors that are on the street. And so it might obfuscate the university, either remove the homes or not rent to students so that, I know at Open University, they bought houses and they only put staff in them, or faculty. And I mean, that's something that we can't control, but I would suggest that to you.
Well, the one thing we did contemplate doing, and are contemplating doing, you know, which comes first, the chicken or the egg? If we don't rent to students in there, then we need more housing to accommodate them. So in a sense, it's to our advantage, because we benefit by charging rent based on housing on the campus compared to in the houses on Circle Drive. So it'd be to our advantage to do that. But that'll also force us into coming back and talking about more housing before we get too much older. And then, we're not quite prepared to do that.
Our concern is that even though we're talking nine residents or homes on the street, everyone has the right to find enjoyment. You live in a house, all of you live in a house, I live in a house. I want to enjoy my property in peace. And I think that that needs to be respected here. And so I think the university needs to address that. Bruce, I've known him longest, but it's no secret, I'm a great fan of Lawrence Tech and everything the university's accomplished. Proud that you're in Southfield and the marvelous things you've done. But on this issue, I really think you need to reassess who's on Circle Drive in this transition period.
One of the things we looked at doing, and we will probably do starting with the next semester, we can't do it now because we already have leases. And right now, we stay within the ordinance, and the people representing us on leasing a property signature, what they do is they rent up to four people in a home, four different family names. And we're prepared to say from now on, it'll only be one, okay? So that will help cut back on the number of students that are, first of all, in the sub, and secondly, the number that will be trafficking past any home that would make anyone feel uncomfortable. So we've taken that into consideration just since the last council meeting.
Right, all right, thank you.
Mr. Saber?
Going along with what Ken said, he covered a lot of the things, the things that I... I support Lawrence Tech in so many ways. But I personally was invited to Circle Drive, and I actually went out and I saw for myself the property that you own, where the residents are, what you, the plans are, what would be the abutment. And then I was very happy to hear the lady say that they were from a certain point, because the house behind one of the houses, it is that far, there's a lot of trees and stuff, but the very next house, the yard that that person owns, goes all the way back beyond those trees. And it's, there's a rose back there that you used, or was used for something like utility terms or whatever, I don't know, that would be behind where the dorm, it sits at the back of the dorm. And that is not the hundred feet or whatever. It's not that far from that person's property.
You're talking about this house?
Yeah. The one that's right on Circle Drive, right on the corner. You know, you have a vacant, one that you own, a vacant house right there on the corner.
That's this one.
And then across from there, right on Circle Drive, it's all Circle Drive. Okay, with a very, I think it's right across the street. Anyway, there's two houses. There's the one that has the short backyard, and then there's the one that has the long backyard. The two different points. But the concern for the resident was it's peace and quiet right now. And if there's, you're probably going to have light. I don't know where your dumpsters are going to be for that. And they wanted to ensure that nobody would try to do paths or whatever through there, again, like what he said. And when I went around Circle Drive, where you have your tennis court, there was a path that the students were using, driving or what have you. And then they would park on Circle Drive, and as you know, Circle Drive is not that wide. And the trees and stuff are over there, so when, and just from me being there, I think in like thirty minutes, there was, I don't know how many cars full of students going up and down the street. One house had four cars in the driveway and another coming. So I understand when the residents say the traffic has gotten, there's more traffic there. It's not as quiet as they would like it to be, and it is pretty much a retirement community, I would say, because the people there are either retired or ready to retire. And the noise is not what they bought in for. And I think just the conversation with them would really be helpful. And I, like I said, I actually saw it. It's not like I'm listening to what someone else is saying. I actually saw this for myself, and I'm trying to picture in my mind the bumpers that you're saying, but there's still, we have used, I mean, these are going to be used. If they can find a shortcut somewhere, they're going to do it. So there needs to be some kind of deterrent, what those deterrents are, like you said, may be the evergreen trees. I don't know. But there's other things that, there's a lot of things that need to be with that. And I think conversation with the residents is going to help you with that.
Yes.
I really would not like to see anybody parking on Circle Drive. It's not wide enough for that. And like I said, just with me being, going down the road with all the cars that were coming, I had to step off to the side. So it's not a very wide street at all. That would be a big concern. And so I'm here to really try to encourage you to talk with the residents. They would like to stay where they are, and they would like the community to remain the way it is. But when you have holiday schools, if there's a frat party, and I'm not saying that there's anything wrong with partying, I'm not saying that at all, but if it's a continuous, every weekend type of thing, your peace and quiet is interrupted. And that's not what they bought in for. And to be a good resident, I think, or a good partner with the residents, I think it should be something that's discussed.
Let me answer one piece of something that you had mentioned. Then I'd like to ask Kevin Finn, the dean of students, who's here with me tonight, to talk a little bit about that, some of what you're getting at there, okay? Let me just mention one thing. I think the area you're talking about where they have the volleyball in here?
Yeah, that was the cross.
And there's some traffic that does come through here?
Yes.
And the traffic primarily that comes through here is our lawn cutting that comes through. In addition, probably students trafficking, no question.
Okay.
No, I mean, I know it's a natural path for somebody to try to do. Some of that's going to be circumvented. There's two things going to circumvent that. Part will be what Mark described about the trees and that that we have planted along there, and the bushes and shrubs.
You're going to put them there with a tennis court there?
No, not there, but along here, all along here.
Okay, okay.
That's going to mitigate some of that going through. That's part of it.
Okay.
The second thing is, you heard him talk about some grassy areas and some tall grasses that are going to grow and some swales in the pension area. I walked back in this area today with that sculpture pieces that's back there next to that. And I came out, my shoes are still wet. I mean, it's not comfortable, and those swales will not be either. Only in July, early August, you might find them normally dry enough to be able to walk through comfortably, but there'll be tall grasses. I don't walk through that sort of thing, and I don't think students will either. So we have, we provided landscaping and sculpting of the land in order to deter. Now, how far do you go with that? You get far enough down here and you get into wetlands, and so there's, no matter what we build across, they're going to find a way to go around the ends.
Right, and I'm not disputing that. What I'm saying is that whatever you're deciding, you're not sharing it with the residents. And the residents need to know so they can buy in to whatever you're doing and say, yes, I agree this will work, or no, it won't. It'll disrupt me, and you know, when I'm sitting out here with my two dogs and a child, I don't want to see traffic going up and down the road, or I don't want to see students running back and forth. Whatever it is, I think you should listen to them and find out how you can work together, because I think you both want the same thing. You bring a lot to the city, and nobody's, you know, arguing that. But we have to make peace with our residents as well, because they've been there for a while, too.
And I agree with you, and we're going to talk to them in the city, now they're already, we'll invite them, get with them. And if we have to talk to them one-on-one, we'll offer to do that. But we are going to do everything we can to meet with them. We will do that.
Because it's not that many.
Oh, I know.
There's not that many. And even if you had to take them and, you know, ask them, I think that would, I think they would appreciate it, honestly, from what the ones that talk to me.
Actually, what's interesting, Bruce and I, and I'm with the Orlos, before we went to council, we met with them and talked about it. True story, okay? Should I do this? Met with both of them together. He was strongly supportive of this, and she had some little hesitancy. We talked about it briefly and said what we were doing, and she said, okay. At the council meeting, he was not there. She spoke, and it was a bigger deal. So we got to get back with them, and that's why I've tried to contact her twice, because she flipped on me. And so I need to know what changed, okay? So we are going to do that, and we just haven't gotten to it yet, okay? I'd like to call on Kevin Finn, our dean of students, to talk a little bit about, I'll call it a combination of student life and what we're doing, but it also gets at the issue of keeping students busy, doing productive things. And, I'll let Kevin tell me. Why am I doing that?
Thank you, Joe. Hi, my name's Kevin Finn, Lawrence Technological University, dean of students, twenty-one thousand, West Timm, Timm, Malo. One thing I did want to mention, after the last meeting, I received a lot of feedback from Joe Asher that. And as the dean of students, I am the disciplinary for students, so when their behaviors are not in alignment with our code of conduct. And all those students who are running on Circle Drive, I went to their homes and I've met with them. And I haven't heard of any behaviors since then that I'm aware of that happened since then. But I will give you my business card if you leave here today, where you can get ahold of me at all times. But the second thing is, is I can tell you even as of last week, I became aware of a party that was being planned, and they did cancel it. And I will continue, I understand that. I live in a neighborhood two and one, to coexist with my, the people. I live right next to Oak University, as you referenced that, so I can totally appreciate that. And with my job, it's kind of funny when you think about it at times, because I'm a huge promoter of student life and the activities that keep students engaged on campus. We're going to be doing a lot of activity, though, to engage these students on the campus, and hopefully they'll stay there. One of the things that came up was the food, when I heard that. We do actually have a nice-ton bagels on our campus. We have a cafeteria that provides meals seven days a week for students and a Starbucks coffee and stuff. So that's why you see smaller kitchenettes and stuff. They prefer to be cooked for still, especially when they're freshmen. The second thing is, if you've been driving by our campus, you probably see our soccer team out there practicing. We've returned athletics. You'll see us out there for homecoming and stuff, but that is also like, tonight, I must admit, so I was jealous, wanted to go see our first women's home volleyball game. For Lawrence Tech, we're historically known as mostly a male college, but we've changed over the years. And this is our first women's team competing in intercollegiate athletics, and it was their first home game tonight. So, you know, special moment, and it's great to see. You'll see next year the return of basketball. So our field house will have, will have that. Our students, though, are very engaged in their community as well, and that's something else that I always like to mention. They volunteer to local, with the Southfield schools, tutoring. They do road cleanups, and you'll see even more of that. This is a generation that's very engaged in their community. They are actually, before our homecoming, our homecoming week kicks off with a service project, where they'll be cleaning up the trails that lead to what would be over here where our point is at. We call it by Northwestern and Timm Malo there, where they play soccer and stuff. So they care about it. The other thing is that we're finding is how much our local businesses really do appreciate our students. And whether it be Tim Hortons, where I picked up breakfast for our athletes almost every day in the month of August, or Cafe Cabab, where a lot of our students from Saudi Arabia really appreciate that restaurant being close by. And Steel Pizza's always been. But, you know, we're finding with our students, this is one thing that they continuously tell us, they want to be more on their campus, and they want to be more a part of the community. With that, though, I want you to know that we do have a code of conduct, and that is something that, when they're out of alignment with, it covers both things. The things I have the most difficulty with the code of conduct are the very high-tech type of things. So when it comes to being a good neighbor and stuff like that, there's something we can find if we need to coach them on that, and their help to that, and I need to know about those things. And if you contact our campus safety and there's something really going on, that is something, they can always get ahold of me directly on my home phone, and they do that at times, too. But, you know, with that, if you have any other questions and stuff, but I...
Not a question, but a comment?
Sure.
In the last thing I'll say, is that the way that the dorms are, they're proposing, Central Michigan has that now, and they absolutely love it. Not only the students, but the adults, the parents, when they come in, they help set them up because the students have their own little rooms, and they come out into like a community room.
You got it.
And it's very nice. So it's nice to see that, and that will take off real fast.
In a little history on Lawrence Tech, we're campus of introverts, just, you know, from engineering standpoint and stuff. So we have to purposely engage them more, and in the last couple of years, we also have, because of majors like computer science and engineering, a high population of students who are autistic. Now, when I say a high population, that might be eight or ten students. But a sad and unfortunate thing that I've had to deal with the last couple of years is those students who would, in a partner style, live in their first year, their social skills, they never let that roam. I actually had to send them back home because they weren't going to class. This will make it easier for us to get them engaged, watch them, and get them to be a part of this great community that we have here in Southfield, but also at Lawrence Tech, too. It is a great concept.
Kevin, could you comment a little bit about the issue of frats? Who's responsible? Who owns those, and what the deal is, and what your approach to them?
Yeah. Fraternities, you report to me. It's probably one of my favorite, and least favorite jobs of days. But a couple of things. If our fraternities are getting out of hand, there's the ultimate card that we can, where we can tell them is their national party. So like if, if they're out of control, or something like that, I can report them to their national, and that will control them right away. Trust me on that, because they live... Uh, 'cause they lose funding, things like that, and that's, you know, money is bottom line.
Can I talk a little bit closer to the mic?
Oh, I'm sorry. We, we can with the, with the paternities. One of the things we can do is we work with our nationals when their behaviors are, are out of hand. We had a fun fraternity a few years ago, I'll give you an example. Um, this was an off-campus event, but they're, they did hate it, not allowed. Uh, I, I cannot, you know, uh, represent our president that way, and, uh, that fraternity was suspended for a year, and had to return back to good behaviors. The second thing though that I do really wanna remember about our paternities and stories though, most of them, with, with the positive is the, um, uh, the leadership development that they go through, but also the, um, uh, service to others and the balanced approach that they are trying to develop. We mostly pick them up from Hollywood, the parties and stuff like that. Quite frankly, the majority of our paternities are very professionally focused, and our students are more engaged in activities that are good to the community. But yes, there are those times that, um, it's a little bit like what we've seen in the movies every year. Did I answer your question, Joe, too?
You hit it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, um, no, my comment's really not directed.
Okay, sure.
But thank you for that information, because I myself am in a sorority, my husband's in a fraternity. So I don't have, you know, we are social, I mean, we're service oriented, but we also do like to get together and have parties and so forth. But that's really not what I wanna talk about. Um, I think Councilman Cybert, when he said that that area has been transitioned, I don't think we said that at the last meeting. And that is exactly, I think, captures what is going on with that area. And how is it that the people who are still there, um, you know, how, how are they at peace with what's going on while the area's in transition? So my question is, you've acquired a number of lots, parcels in the area. How did that come about? Were they, were they vacant? Did you buy the people out? Because I'm not sure when, I was listening to the residents the other day. I couldn't quite grasp what it was that some of them wanted. It seemed like they wanted to be treated fairly. That if, if, if Lawrence Tech was expanding and, and the, and the, and there's nothing wrong with the youth, or there's, there's nothing wrong with the, having a campus there. But that they wanted to be treated in a way that if they were going to relocate, maybe even in Southfield, that they were bought out with ample funds to buy another house similar to what they have, or, uh, you know, that, I heard that. And I, I heard a little bit of a, well, I wanna stay here, but you know, if you decide that you wanna stay there, that you're right in the middle of a college campus that is expanding, that is good for everybody. Um, so I'm wondering, how did you go about acquiring the other parcels? W- you know, were they abandoned homes, or did you buy the people out? Have you made offers to the other folks? Have they just said, no, this is not enough money? It's Lawrence, as you look at, at this, you can see clearly that that whole area, probably one day it's gonna be owned by Lawrence Tech. You know? And you might have, um, housing for students, you know, a variety of things. You know, your upper, you know, grad students or the upper grad, but your upper class might wanna live in the house versus the dorm. And that, you can just see that it's just an ideal, like, location. I think it's great for the city. My question, how did you acquire the other parcels?
I can go back with personal knowledge that goes back to nineteen ninety-eight. Before that, I can go by hearsay.
Joe, I can, I can address that if you want.
Take that, here's the help.
And is that the plan? And how do we get through the transition, whether it be ten years from now, or five years, or three?
Sure. Uh, I'm Bruce Sanette, I'm Director of Public Affairs at Lawrence Tech, and I've worked here, here in the city for thirty-five years with the university. And so I've seen a lot of these activities, uh, transpire. Uh, Lawrence Tech, over time, has been acquiring Circle Drive properties as they become available. Uh, we haven't, uh, gone in purposely trying to buy properties, but as parcels come up for sale, uh, we, uh, look at them and, and the price that folks are asking, and, and if we believe it's a market price, then we've been acquiring it. Because, yes, over time, we do expect that we wanna grow or have this available, this space available for the campus's future growth, whether it's for academic purposes, or housing, or recreation. Um, this has been a long-term process. We've been in that campus since nineteen fifty-five, starting off with about sixty-five acres, uh, when it was the Laro General Mills Research Farm. And, uh, uh, we have been slowly building, uh, over that time. Uh, I don't know if anyone here is, was back here in the early, in the mid nineteen seventies, but Lawrence Tech has another example. When we were building a nine-story housing center across Ten Mile Road, maybe Don was, was active on council at that point. Um, there was a lot of neighborhood opposition. People were concerned about noise and lights and students, uh, outside running around. And at that time, in nineteen seventy-six, I did what people told me later was a really foolish thing. I said, if you have a problem, here is my home phone number, and call me anytime there's a problem. And really, honestly, in those thirty-five-year period, there's only been one phone call that I've received, and that was because people, someone, a neighbor along Tammerack Drive asked, could we stop mowing the floodplain because it was being used too much? So we did stop mowing the floodplain, uh, next to the building at that time. So I'm not trying to minimize any of these concerns. The university will address them. We wanna be good neighbors here in the community. Uh, we're in it for the long term. We, we, we want to continue to grow here in the community. But I think there are solutions that we can work out to everybody's satisfaction. Uh, we'll do everything we can to make sure our students are orderly and are good neighbors. And if there's a problem, uh, I'll give you my phone number again. Kevin, Kevin or Campus Safety, or any of the number of others here on campus can, can help address those concerns.
So are you saying that when the parcels were up to sell, then you made an offer? Or you say that over time you've made offers to the homeowners, and some accepted them?
Yeah, we haven't purposely gone forth in most cases to acquire the parcels. But when they are, when the homeowner is ready to sell, um, we, we hope they're aware that we'd be interested in, in talking to them. So that's how we've acquired most of the parcels. It's been, uh, a very friendly, uh, on a very friendly basis. And we've, we've essentially paid the market price, uh, for the parcels at the time the homeowner is ready to sell.
And in today's world, the market price in southeast of Michigan, that's somewhat of a world targeted a handle on, or how do, how do people to be satisfied with it? I, and I think that's more the concern, I, I don't wanna, and I'm doing exactly what I don't wanna do, but I don't wanna repeat myself, I think that it's been captured, you know? Um, I don't think we had an issue about, you know, what the dorms are gonna look like. You know, we, we knew that that was gonna be fine. They, our issue, I think, had to do with the residents that were still remaining in that area, how to, um, help them to have an area that they move to. Oh, but it is in transition, you just have to recognize that.
So, well, there have been a couple of houses. I know there was one, I didn't even get involved with that Bruce, where, where, for example, we were, it was up in here, one of these parcels up in here.
You wanna stand the whole course of the record?
Yeah, there was a parcel up in here, and we, it became the last one in that clump, which a couple of years ago became, we foresaw the need for needing this for housing somehow, not specific to this layout, but knowing we'd need it. So we approached and talked to those people and did some estate planning, whereby they had the opportunity to be guaranteed the price on their home. I don't know the details of that, but the end result was, when they decided to move, we became owners of the property, or something to that effect. Okay? So we did talk with someone that we saw was one that was more interested. Now, we have had people approach us. We had one that approached us for a, a piece of property that would, looks to be in our way in the not-too-distant future, that was asking somewhere in the neighborhood, I was told about a year and a half or two years ago, asking half a million dollars for it. And we said, no, thank you. I mean, we're not gonna argue the point, the answer is no. We know that the last property we buy, someday, we're gonna pay above market. Someday, a house is gonna be in our way, and in order to get it, we're gonna have to pay more than it's worth. We're not there, okay? Now we go to market. Now, there was another person who had a house that talked at the last meeting, and it was, um, one of these two here, and I'm not sure which one, but, uh, one of those. And we have a broker that watches for houses that are up for sale or vacant. And that signature, and they made us aware of the house. Our people contacted the owner, walked through the house. Signature did a comps-type estimate of the value of the home or appraisal, and came back and said, tried to, we'd like to put forth a proposal. They make a commission when they make a sale. That's no secret, that's how they make a living. And they came back and said fifty-two thousand. So we said, okay, and they put a proposal out there at fifty-two thousand. Timing is everything. And so now we have the council meeting, and here is somebody who had a hundred and seventy thousand invested, and got a fifty-two thousand dollar offer from us. Well, yeah, that, now you got problems. Because what's the market today? It's not a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. It's closer to fifty-two thousand. The latest is, they've come back at us with a number like a hundred and fifty, and we're sitting there wondering what to do with it. And we haven't responded to it, because we don't have a need for it for an awful long time. A very long time. So I don't, I doubt if we'll act on it.
And so I guess, oh, I guess with the residents, or well, at least I'm saying, as a councilperson representing the citizens, that until that time, then it has to be where the citizens are, are respected for what they moved there for, and they didn't, when they moved there, it wasn't a college campus. Um, um, and so that, you know, Lawrence has, has kind of like an obligation to address that, you know? The neighborhood is changing.
And we did that in a way. Let me give you one example of that. Uh, the president is still, and he relates his story to me as recent as today, before coming here tonight. And, and he was disappointed, Kevin, you may recall this. We got into a debate about two-story versus four-story.
The dorm?
Well, the existing dorm that we have, the J-shaped building, is a four-story building. Now, he, the efficient thing for us to do is four-story. He wanted four-story. Would we be talking here tonight if I were standing here talking about another twenty-some, uh, almost twenty-five feet of additional height to this same building? I don't think so. I don't think we'd have made it past the Planning Commission meeting, quite frankly. So, you know, through conversations that we had, we knew better than to even try to impose a four-story building here. It isn't a matter of marketing it, it's a matter of it being the wrong thing to do. We teach architecture at Lawrence Tech. We teach urban planning. We can't go about trying to teach people to do the right thing and do the wrong thing ourselves. And so it, it's, it was wrong to plan for a four-story building. And so Kevin and the provost fought for two-story for operational reasons and, and making it too big. And, and I thought it from the standpoint of it was the wrong thing to do aesthetically and burden that community. So we have, on our own, without talking about it, without anyone imposing it on us or negotiating it, we just did the right thing, kept it a two-story. So, we have tried to be sensitive to that. You know, we have, we have so many people in the community that love us, not just here. I mean, just between the six hundred employees that we have and twelve hundred and fifty alumni that live in the city of Southfield. We appeal to them. I mean, we, we want their input. We ask for their help when we're designing things like this. I'm not trying to knock the place apart, just getting excited now. So, we're not, we're not trying to impose in the community. We're trying to blend in slowly over time. Will the next building be two-story? Probably not. We'd probably be looking at three or four. I mean, it depends where it's built and when.
Mr. Lawrence?
I really respect what you just said about doing the right thing. And, and just to emphasize the point that you, because I know, I know your campus very well. And I can just hear Dr. Walker saying. Um, so that, that speaks volume of, of you and the, um, and, um, the university. I, I just wanted to, and I think, um, my two colleagues and, um, Councilmen here have said it very well. This is amazing, um, the, the building, the growth of the campus is something we're very proud of. It's, it, it ties into us wanting more walkable traffic. Um, the students', um, civic center development down there, it keeps expanding, and it's partly because of the students. It, I can't believe Tim Hortons is at two in the morning. It's, it's like it's six, six in the evening or something, but. So it's obvious, we need more, uh, internet, um, facilities over there for students. The thing that I, um, I just wanna emphasize, um, is that accessibility to Circle Drive. Um, I know the swales aren't very walkable. I kinda appreciate that. I appreciate if you put the, the natural fencing up. Um, and I'm glad you understand that, 'cause you said, you know, when you talk about trees like, like fall comes in Michigan, but if you put the evergreens up, it is a deterrent. I don't know what the students will be walking to over there. Um, so I think if you really, really plan a natural fence, 'cause I, my initial response was, put a fence up and then we won't have this discussion. But, um, and I don't understand why you didn't propose that. But, but you're talking about a natural fence. I don't know why the students will walk there. Um, there's nothing to really attract them there. But the ones that live on Circle Drive, it would be great to just walk through the woods and go right to the campus. So, um, and we know we have students living in. But that has to be very densely, um, landscaped to stop that. Because we have nature paths, and people create paths, and they, you know, over there in carpeted lakes, you can see the, the beach path where people create other things, and you can do that through the woods. But I just don't want that traffic, although I want people to walk. I'm, I'm really torn. Um, you don't have a sidewalk on Circle Drive.
Nope.
So if anyone walks, they have to walk in the street. So, um, I want you to know that's still a concern. I, I, um, I want the residents who are left, and you're not on a fast track, it doesn't sound like. So it's likely that we'll have those residents there for a long time. So I do want the residents to have that quality of life that they want. 'Cause that, that street is so isolated, and it's like a, a very, you know, quiet, you know, kinda sacred place. It's one of those places you, you, you die to find, 'cause you're, like in the country in the middle of the city, so. The other thing is, I, and I still think a fence will do well, but, um, if, if the landscaping doesn't make it, I'll be back to talk to you about it soon. Um, the other thing is, to the housing, uh, students, directors, my thing in, in, in the rental company, and I use the example of Michigan State. When my son was a senior, he moved away from the kids.
Right.
To adult housing, or family housing. And it's more responsible, they don't party as much when they're seniors, they just wanna get the heck out of that. And they're more responsible, they usually have a job at that point. And they're, they're more inclined to be integrated into a community. And I would think that while you're getting that revenue, I can respect that. You can't put four families in there, but sometimes there are married couples who are in school, or, um, adult students. And I would just think if you did that kind of screening, it would, because they're not gonna be out doing bonfire when they're seniors and adults trying to get a job. You know, the puking and the drinking phase has passed, um, hopefully. Um, but, um, that's something to me that makes so much sense. And the last thing I'm gonna say, is I heard it once, I heard it a million times, the town and gown council, gown and town, or town and gown. And this is one of those examples. The, as amazing as Lawrence Tech is, I'm, I'm disappointed that you haven't just had, pitch, pitch the tent on one of your vacant lines, invite all the neighbors over, have a staff there. And, and if you wanted to have hot dogs or just, just coffee and cookies. I'm, I'm disappointed that you haven't done that. And even do it with the students that live there, so that they can meet their neighbors. I mean, that-
Can I, can I pitch one thing? We are gonna be doing, we are gonna be inviting everybody to our homecoming. And, uh, one other thing we are doing this year to our students in the housing units is inviting all of our neighbors into Ranger Children's Trick or Treating on, um, October thirtieth. And if you're familiar with Harry Potter, they play a game called Quidditch in Harry Potter, where they fly in brooms. It's actually a very popular game on college campuses, and going back to our students being, uh, more creative types and so on, it's a game they wanna play. They're gonna teach us since we have a area that we've set up a Quidditch court. Their brooms won't fly that day, but they will play with brooms and stuff, and, uh, those are things that we are starting to arrange. So, um, I will be, my, my students will be coming by to drop off invitations for the home- And those are things that we are starting to arrange. So, I will be, my students will be coming by to drop off invitations for the homecoming to the residents. And then additionally, the trick-or-treating will be another thing that we're going to be doing to extend it out as well.
But then that personal, just Circle Drive and you, Circle Drive and you, the residents there where you can go eye to eye, adult to adult. And if there are students there, invite them so they know that they have neighbors. That's a very simple thing and that's for neighborhood association meetings.
We'll get that done.
That's common.
It's a good idea.
We can get that done.
We can, we can do that. That's a good way to do it. They can choose to come or not come. That's up to them.
We'll put that together. That's, that's going to be fun. So, that's what we want.
That's better than knocking on their door and trying to invite them one at a time. I like that.
I agree. Thank you.
Mr. Tasty?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was going to kind of step back for a moment and kind of rehash the last meeting. And if we would have maybe had this meeting at the original one, it would have been pretty clear that, that, you know, there is a lot of landscaping and that that dormitory is in the furthest corner. In other words, that site plan wasn't shown. It was there, I think, wasn't it, Terry? I think, but it wasn't really adapted to the neighborhood, how the, how it traced it was like, for example, you're looking at, at most of the residents who are presently there outside of the one, they use just the main drive, that circle portion, you know, the university owns most of that. And stepping back again, the first item on that was the master plan. And I think that kind of got out of hand in that the people didn't understand that the master, master plan was separated from everything. It was one step. Second step was that you needed zoning on where you were going to place the dormitory. And that was step two. And the third one, of course, was the site plan. So, you know, I made a comment at the time that doing a master plan, that, that whole blue section should be right over to the far west of that subdivision. And it's meaningless presently, but in the future, it kind of tells people where you're headed. And what the city is going, how the city is going and how the growth of the university is headed. And, and so, I, but doing it partially, I guess, Terry, there's no problem with that, but it's not a true picture of where they're going. I see no problem at all with this and I, I am really assured by the comments made because the dean wasn't here of students to say that, you know, I'll give you my telephone number and, and I'll clean it up. Because that night, I think, we had the hearing, most of the comments were about the, like the night before the hearing, they said there was a bonfire. You know, the students had a bonfire. I mean, that's the worst thing you, worst thing you can do from a public relations standpoint is have a big party and a bonfire, say this is Lawrence Tech, you know? And, and so, I, I think it's a great plan. I, I'm very sensitive to the neighbors that are presently there. Looking at the plan, I could see though that they use the main drive going out south to Ten Mile Road and really have no intrusion on that other side except for the two parcels that are right up there in the, in the northeast corner. The thing I really like is the landscaping. I mean, that really, that really is attractive. It really separates the university from the present residents. And, and I just think it's a great plan. It's very much needed. We are dealing with international students every day. And the only way you're going to attract them is by giving them quarters to live. And we should have been that step ahead a long time ago because, you know, it's such a big thing today. I know that we have a group from, from our church that meets with the students, the international students on Sunday in the heaven lunch and whatever activities. But I, I just think that you guys can work it out. I think, you know, I'm very confident. The meeting that the mayor suggested is a great thing, you know, to get to know your neighbor and having communication with the dean and university. I think things will work out. But I think it's very much needed. I think it's a great plan and, and I think you should go home.
Thank you. Is that? Is that? Okay. Is there anyone else? I have a couple of questions myself. That is kind of in a secluded place because it's, they have so much vegetation around it. What kind of lighting do you have for security of students?
I can speak a little bit to that. We actually have some, I'm sorry, we actually have some cut sheets of, these are about fourteen-foot high pedestrian light poles. Everything's focused down. There are required by code at each exit, emergency lighting as well. But for the most part, we're lighting all of the pathways with these fourteen-foot high pedestrian poles.
Okay, so that should, yeah, but so it should light the area well enough because in other areas of town, we've had some concern in the past that some folks don't follow the rules. And I'd hate to start, you know, build a thing with concern.
No, student safety is certainly a major concern and item that we've tried to focus on. So, the lighting is very crucial, but at the same time, we don't want it to look like a, you know, a parking lot.
Oh, of course, because the neighborhood doesn't, it doesn't fit the neighborhood if it's, you know, makes a lot of circus.
You got a good point. The building is very secluded. It's a very high dense woods and then, really, the lighting is going to be primarily towards the existing parking lot and building, student housing building to the, to the north. So, or the existing north student housing. So, the offlighting really is minimal.
Okay, another question. How far away from the parking lot is the entrance to the building?
Approximately. And is the entrance in the center of the building or is it on the end or?
It's probably a hundred and fifty feet. Between a hundred and twenty to a hundred and fifty, a hundred and fifty feet, yeah. Near to the drop-off.
Okay, it's a, it's a path?
It's a, right, it's a sidewalk. Because that's green path.
The reason, the reason I ask that is having moved kids in and out of dorms.
Right.
The closer you get the car with all the paraphernalia that the kids are taking into, into the dorm room, the better it is because it seems like carts are always, first of all, the wheels don't, don't go in the same direction, but, but...
They do it out to you, they're already... They're a left-hand cart, so...
But as a parent, you know, I grit, grit my teeth when I had to move the kids a long way. So, I just wondered how far it was and how many parents are going to be angry at you for, for not making it more convenient for me to move the kids in.
Well, that's a good point. And the good news is the furniture is all provided. The beds, the dressers, the wardrobes are all provided. So, they're really bringing in their clothes, their, you know, things that survive. So, but it's about a hundred and twenty feet. Manageable.
Okay, I, I know you picked that public right.
There is, you know, on Housing, on Housing North, the J-shaped building.
Yes.
We have a drop-off area that planned everyone would come in the front door on that busy weekend when they're moving in that week before. If it's not fast enough for them, they park down here and they come in the end. So, that's one day or two, they got the door propped and they're hauling everything in that way, taking it down to the elevator. So, on those extreme days like that, you will get that. You'll get that here too, realistically. Like there is a, a door in here at the end, right here, which is walk-in.
Oh, sir, they're going to use that one.
And so, when, when it's that mass moving time, that door will get propped. They're going to come in this way. They're going to come in this way. They will do that, no question. Now, we did do some things on hardware. This is something very subtle. I wouldn't even think to normally talk about here. But the hardware on the doors is aggressively. So, now, anyone trying to come in at these points is barred from trying to do that. Okay? That's, that makes it more inviting only to go to the front entrance to the building for entry.
You know, lock the door open when they go out.
Well, that, that is a problem, but we can even deal with that. If they start doing that, we can alarm it so that that doesn't happen. So, we don't resort to that unless it becomes a problem.
Yeah. Well, because the building is in such a secluded place, extra precautions need to be taken so that, and the students need to understand that if they go out there and they, you know, put a screwdriver in the door, you know, to keep the door blocked open so they can come back in, they're risking themselves.
That's a huge penalty and, and housing too can result in expulsion because that is a huge security compromise. Yeah. We're hard on that one.
And the other thing, we don't have the plan completed for low voltage stuff yet, but we will have cameras strategically placed in the building. That watch for end, points of entry and areas where something can go awry, access, we have to protect the students.
Absolutely.
So, and we know that and we put those things in place to do that.
We have to protect the students too because anything that happens is a mark on self-defense.
That's right.
So, when we ask more questions, we want to make sure that you thought it through too.
Yep.
The last thing is kind of a, it may be a pick-a-hum thing, but your tearing up trees, you're replanting a hundred and seventy-nine trees north. Are there any native protected plants in that area that you have to work around?
Well, I know there's a couple of trees that we're choosing to work around that are like thirty-six inches in diameter. And that's where we're building that wall around so that we protect the root structure of that tree before excavation takes place.
The reason, the reason I ask that question is a number of years ago, we remodeled our golf course. And one of the things that we had to do was we had to hire a native plant expert to come out and go through the area and pick, pick out the plants that were protected and move them to a different location so they didn't get disturbed when we remodeled the golf course.
When we did the survey, we took a complete inventory of all of the trees and their species there. And that's listed in the documents that have been submitted to the planning board.
Okay, but these aren't trees. These were plant, plant, well, in March?
No, there are not any significant native plantings. I mean, there, you're speaking of undersourced planting material?
Yes.
No, nothing, nothing. There are some remnants of some existing homes, the landscaping of homes that are there. Very large trees, as Joe said, thirty-six inch or forty-two inch trees that we saved. A large ginkgo tree, which is magnificent. There's a big cat's ear tree, which you really don't find a lot of in, in, you know, a native planting of this size, of this type. But we've done everything we can and that's, that's the reason for this wall right here. In fact, the detention pond used to be, used to sit sort of like in the middle. And we got on board and, you know, pushed and pulled a little bit with the engineer to have them push that further to the south. Not only to create a better environment here and open space for the kids, but also to protect these trees, this existing hedgerow that's along there now.
Okay, yeah. It really surprised me when we were working on the golf course that, and I learned a lot, an awful lot that there are some plants and some animals that live at the edge of the woods and there are some that live in the center of the woods. And where we, what we did was we went down through, so we made two edges, two new edges. So, we had to move the plants that were center of the woods back in so that they, they survived.
Well, that was the nature of providing the sort of native grassland area, which will then, through succession, natural plant succession, those environments will be recreated.
Good. All right.
I just wanted to add that one of the considerations, if there's public parking, we're discussing maybe traffic control on that part so that there'd be no parking or standing. But that becomes a concern.
Sure. Yeah, that can come back to us and we can get traffic control ordered to put a, no parking or standing. Okay? Thank you. Mr. Coach?
I'm all set. You're just going to break down.
Okay, you're all set with all, the whole thing? All right? So, this will appear on our agenda for...